7:30. So if you could let people in as they start, I'll call the meeting to order.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to call the January 25th, 2021 virtual, regular, public meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education to order. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the date, time, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. During this meeting, we asked that all members of the public mute themselves unless they are speaking during a public comment period. If needed, we may mute you ourselves. You may leave your video on or off at your option. If we experience bandwidth issues and believe that limiting video would help, we may do so. We will have at least two public comment periods. If at that time you wish to speak, please raise your blue virtual hand in Zoom and wait for me to call on you. If you cannot raise your virtual hand, or if I miss your virtual hand, please turn on your video camera and raise your actual hand. New Jersey law requires us to inform you that all commenters must behave appropriately. In Highland Park, this means no screaming obscenities or inappropriate video displays. In the event of a speaker's inappropriate behavior, they will be muted, and we will come back to them at a later time. If the speaker is the final commenter at the last comment period, we will invite them to return at our next meeting. Okay. So let's do the roll. Linda, could you call the roll? Linda, you're muted.
Sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Marasti here. Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowan?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner? Ms. McFadden, Tina Cola? I saw her.
She is here.
She's here. And I saw Rob. Hmm, okay.
Okay, Ms. Prouse?
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. You're a little bit delayed. Mr. Rizlevich?
Here.
Mr. Woodward?
Here.
And Linda, Mr. Magaziner is here now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now could we do the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you. So we had two communications. On January 19th, we had a communication from Leah Capradale, and on January 20th, we had a communication from Robert Russner. So we have our minutes. This is a voting meeting. So we have our minutes to approve, and these are the minutes from December 14th, virtual public meeting, and from the January 4th, virtual public reorganization meeting. Do we have any comments from board members on this? Okay, with that said, I'd like to, well, first, I guess I should have moved it first, but I'd like to move that we approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments again? Okay, if not, let's do a roll call then, Linda.
Mr. Marasti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner? Is he muted?
I think he's gone again.
He's gone again.
Okay. Ms. McFadden, Tina Cola?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Prouse?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up on our agenda is the student representative report. Polly, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, I do.
Hi, Polly.
Hi, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Mariana couldn't make it. She recently got a job, so sometimes that conflicts. Okay, so we have quit a lot since the last meeting. So in the high school, the Highland Park Fling just created a new website. You can find all of their work at fling.hpschools.net. So that's super awesome. Several seniors this year are participating in the school's global citizenship program. So I thought I'd highlight some of their really cool projects. Inverin created a creative writing contest for students of all ages, and he will be accepting submissions through February 5th. Kenneth Chow is hosting a book drive in collaboration with a New Jersey charity called Bridge of Books, and he's accepting, I think there was an email sent out today through Genesis, he's accepting books. You can drop them off at any of the schools or at the Reformed Church from February 1st through the 16th, and Rosie Connolly started a film club at the high school. Their first meeting's tomorrow. So they're focusing on, you know, learning about the filmmaking process, and I think they're going to create their own short films. So that should be really interesting. HP Monk is wrapping up its seasons, its season of civics. They're having a panel with an ACLU Policy Council and founder Dr. Amir Whitaker, HP Music Director Miguel Bolivar, and then some HPHS alumni. This Wednesday, students in the race, gender, and ethnicity class will present presentations to Monique about various issues of racial disparities and inequities in Highland Park, including housing, tracking, social stratification, and police brutality. And then the Highland Park Mayor's Teen Advisory Council is hosting a downtown HP photo challenge through February 14th, just to boost local business, which is really nice. You can take a photo of yourself with a purchase from any Main Street Highland Park business and email it to Lila Walsh at lwalsh@students.hpschools.net, and I think they're giving out gift cards. The middle school students are working on a mural for social justice issues, and the installation will be displayed somewhere near Peanose as part of the Windows of Understanding Art exhibition. Glow students have opened, have all opened Instacart accounts. They're looking for volunteers to allow them to pretend shop for them, or pretend shop for you. So if you're willing to do this, they would love if you'd reach out to Ms. Miller at jmillar@hpschools.net, and then a student will be assigned to you and will contact you about further details. Middle schoolers also finished up map testing this week, and also hard at work on their Black History Month projects, which will be turned into a virtual gallery walk. Bartle, Bartle had an epic, so encouraging positivity and inspiring change movie night on the 21st. They all watched Toy Story 4 together and did activities based on, you know, good friendships and what are characteristics of good friends. And Mr. Roy and Mr. Stark are starting to offer Workout Wednesdays for all students and staff. Let's see, Irving, Irving is excited to have a family pajama evening coming up February 4th. They will have, they will provide an online bookshelf with readings from school staff, administrators, and the community. They thank everyone that helped with the great project. Oh, also, as part of their Black History Month celebration, students will be focusing on famous African-American artists. And that's about it.
Polly, thank you so much. That was a great report. Really fantastic. Thank you.
Can I say something? Mark? Just a quick comment.
Sure.
It's Monique.
Oh, there you are. I'm scanning the board.
I should have announced myself. So I just wanted to reiterate, yeah, wonderful, wonderful report, and so much positivity there in everything that you shared. I was thinking about a couple of things. One, I can't wait to hear the presentations in the Race and Class class on this Wednesday. It's just a privilege that students can even have the opportunity to take that kind of class at the high school level. You know, I didn't get to take a race class and gender class until I got to college, so, you know, and that was, I was at HBCU, so of course it was offered there. But now you have it where you can actually, you know, really deep dive into these issues at a high school level. You guys are really, really, you know, dynamic, dynamic age group, and I feel really honored to be able to sit and listen and learn and give some feedback. So I wanted to comment on that and give kudos to all those participating. The mayor's group initiative, I'm really encouraged to hear as well. One thing I am thinking when I hear about taking pictures of people supporting businesses and how important it is to show support for businesses, we also want to think about people who are not in the position to be able to financially, you know, go out and shop and show that kind of support. So I would hope that there's some way to, I think, just be aware of that and somehow build that into the way this project is presented, whether it's through people giving to people, you know, in their supportive businesses, but some sort of way making this more about, again, yes, supporting businesses, but doing it in a way that's very much reflective on the fact that we all can't be in that position right now. So I think it's just a sensitive time when we see people being able to buy, and sometimes just essentials are hard for people to buy at this moment. So I just wanted to kind of make that comment and hope that there's ways to think about that amongst the participants.
Monique, thank you. Any, anyone else? Okay, well, then with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Taylor for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mark. So I'd like to spend about 10 minutes or so getting everybody up to speed about my observations, my thinking, my research. I'm going to begin by talking a little bit about the state of the pandemic as I see it right now, and that's through the eyes of scientists and public health professionals. And then I'm going to clarify the criteria that a stakeholder group, including first responders, epidemiologists, that I developed to determine when I open and close schools. I'm then going to talk about a very important aspect of the work that we've been doing ongoing, and that is supporting students' mental health and addressing their needs. And then, of course, I'll take questions from the board if any arise. First things first, before I deep dive into matters around the closing and opening of the schools, I want to remind everybody that we still offer free testing, COVID-19 testing, for students, parents, guardians, relatives in the family, so that can include siblings, and of course, personnel and board members. Testing is free. We have scaled back the frequency of testing to one day for an hour and 15 minutes. That was at the behest of the company that's doing the testing. We noticed that we had relatively small numbers registering for the test. I know it's not a perfect process. I've been communicating by email mostly with some people who have been appreciative of the company providing the service, but have called out some of the things we can do better. So I have been working with the director to do that. So that's Tuesdays from 3:00 to 4:15. You simply go to the district website. If you don't go to Facebook usually, and the district website, once you get past the pop-up menu, you'll see a section for in-person and remote resources, and in that is the link that takes you to the registration section of the site. So I'd like to talk about what has been continuing to sit with me as I have to make weekly decisions about whether we open or close our schools. My bottom line is, I need to, first of all, provide for the physical health and safety of the kids and the adults who work in the building. And then, second of all, but not necessarily less of a priority, I need to be very cognizant that the pandemic is taking a very serious mental health toll on our kids. And I'm going to speak about some of what we are already doing and have available to help kids through their mental health challenges. We have seen since last year double to triple the number of cases in Houghton Park. Now fortunately, in the last couple of days, we're seeing a an incremental, very gradual, but steady decrease in the number of cases. So we're certainly getting to a much better place. Folks with whom I've spoken in the public health field and an epidemiologist I speak with frequently certainly believe that we are seeing the end of the post-holiday surge, finally. So we'll just have to take everything day by day and see how these numbers play out. I should note that the cases here in Highland Park are well above what the CDC believes is considered a highest level of the disease. I'm also mindful, as are my colleagues around the region, that the new strain or strains of the virus that makes it highly contagious has now made its way to our neck of the woods. So this is resting with me as I also think about maintaining health and safety of everybody who's connected to the district community. And I have to add, because it's so timely, what the New York Times just called the Sunday Times Magazine, and that is the reality that the virus that we're dealing with is, of course, not a cold, not a common cold, nor can it be likened to something as relatively innocuous as the flu. COVID-19, besides being a very deadly disease that is projected to kill up to 400,000 people in the next couple of months, is also a disease that scientists are finding causes serious after effects, respiratory after effects. I mean, I, I have a lot of people in the art world in my circle who are very concerned about contracting the virus because they're concerned how it's going to affect their respiratory system, which is a known long-term after effect. So I'm very mindful of all of these things while I'm making my decisions on a weekly basis. I do want to note, because I've gotten a few emails suggesting that most schools in the state are running classes in person, that as of an article in today's version of, digital version of ng.com, 270 schools, that's almost half the schools and school districts in the state are currently all remote. 461 are hybrid. Let me circle back to the criteria that I had been using based on stakeholder input and consultation with two epidemiologists in the region, both highly respected, to open and close our schools. First, I have to remind everyone, because I've discussed this previously back in August, when the first iteration of the COVID-19 response plan was developed by the stakeholder group. The reasoning behind our closing and opening schools is firmly rooted in science and public health policy expertise, which the CPC has wrapped into a set of guidelines that you can click to by copying this URL down. There are three takeaway summary guidelines when you go to this site that you'll read. One, a school district must take into account recent new cases striking a community when considering whether to open or close schools. Two, a school district must take into consideration the percentage of positive tests in the community, the percentage, that is, of those who were tested positive as compared to the entire population in the community. And finally, school districts must consider if they have the capacity to implement key mitigation strategies, and I'm going to give you examples of how we are honing in on these things. First of all, we established a careful threshold number that takes into account the CDC guidelines to look at local numbers of positive cases, and we decided to go with a seven-day rate because that is what, that's the guidance that we received, particularly from one of the specialists with whom I've been working. In terms of making sure we have everything in place to open safely, that's, that's set. We've been set since, well, since September. We've got everything from masks to a digital contact tracing system in place. Right now, as of today, as of this afternoon, there were five cases reported today. We've had 35 cases in the last seven days. That's well above the threshold of 21 that we established as the stakeholder group to open up the Middleland High School, and that's several cases shy of the threshold, which is no more than 32 cases. I'm sorry, yeah, no more than 32 cases that we established for the elementary schools. I do not continue, when I reflect on the decisions that we decided to, to make, I don't do that in isolation. I work closely with epidemiologists who I trust, trust because of the credentials, their background, and the sound advice they gave me early last year when the first wave of the pandemic hit March and April. And then I continue to meet regularly with stakeholders. Most recently, I met with the group that's comprised mostly of parents, guardians, and personnel. Now, I am committed to the standard that we've used. I have been dialoguing with parents off and on, by email, by phone, over the last several weeks. I have, in at least two cases, considered some of the input I received, questions that I've gotten, gone back to the epidemiologists through my work, and then circled back to the decision plan that we made, and still am feeling confident that what we have is the most appropriate plan to keep all of the people who were involved in the school district safe, physically safe. In fact, one question that I was asked twice by two separate parents, one by email, one by phone, was, hey, Scott, could it be that the number of positive cases has gone up because we've been testing more? Well, I reached out to one of the epidemiologists who threw my work, asked that question, and the epidemiologist came back and said absolutely not, for two reasons. Well, actually, two reasons, and then there's one that I deduced. Third, one, when you look at the raw data and you compare it to last year, hands down, there are more positive cases in the state, let alone the country, than there were when the pandemic was at its height the first time. Two, when you look at the percentage of those who tested positive, among all of those who were tested, it is still much higher than it was when the same number tested positive in relation to the total number tested back in, in March and April. The third factor that has me not recognizing the idea that, you know, look, we have more positive tests, because we're testing more, is the reality that testing came full-on by the summer. I mean, you could even argue that by September, October, there were many more testing sites open, many more testing sites open. This company, Back-to-Work Solutions, that we're using was already in two school districts, Sayreville and South River. And back then, our numbers were, were much less than they are now. So I am confident that, after considering some of the input I've received and the questions I fielded, the measure we're using, that is, again, 21, no more than 20 cases over seven days to open up the Middleland High School, and no more than 32 cases to open up the elementary schools, is sound and appropriate. Now, that being said, I think this community, now that I've been here five years, knows that one of my expertises is social emotional wellness. One of my priorities has been fighting for our kids' mental health. I find the teen center to be likely one of the most, maybe top two or three important components of the entire school district because of all the wonderful services it provides. And by the way, I, I'm all in when it comes to mental health because I, through the years, have, have my own challenges, and I've overcome them thanks to therapy and other self-care supports. And then, of course, having a good support base around me. So I do want to speak for a couple of minutes about what we are doing now. I want to make sure that the public that might be here tonight or watching the recording is fully aware that we have activities and therapeutic supports in place that I very much want to make sure our kids are taking advantage of. First of all, we have a, what is now a full-fledged outdoor activity program. I want to give Aunt Gowan a shout-out. She was a real backer, main proponent of this program. I was just a doer. I was just the person who was in the trenches, making it all try to happen. We now have the following outdoor activities going on every day, unless, unless the weather is inclement like we'd have coming tomorrow. Or just too severe. We have 55 middle and high school students registered right now who are showing up in groups, usually of like 20, somewhat 20 in a group. And then, I'm pleased to announce, we'll learn more about this soon. The teen center is going to be bringing its annual Valentine's Day dance outside, so that February 12th, we anticipate we'll have an outdoor teen center Valentine's Day dance. So these are opportunities to get kids out, socializing with peers. What we've done, as you can see from the list of outdoor activities we're offering, is provide at least one non, you know, intensive athletic activity, walk and talk. Ms. Liu actually works with kids who just want to socialize distance properly, of course, on the track, while at the same time walking and getting some aerobic exercise. Our guidance staff and the teen center staff are available for our kids on the phone, via Zoom, and of course, when we're back in person, in person, to provide them the support they need. This is the contact information that I also posted on Facebook, so please take it down. Ms. Gonzalez-Golstein is the Irving Guidance Counselor, and Ms. Young is the Bartle Guidance Counselor. And our teen center is made up of a licensed clinical social worker, psychologist, and a social worker who have been for years providing intensive therapeutic supports for our kids. I do want to point out that right now, if you look at the column on the very right, you'll see the number of students who are taking advantage of therapy. Of course, free of charge. This is all school-provided function. I asked Ms. Asamoah, the teen center director, to categorize the, the types of needs that our kids have. I don't want to, I'd be very transparent. I don't want to hide the reality that I read, I'm an avid New York Times reader, I read the piece about the Nevada school superintendent who decided to open schools because of a, of a serious spate of suicides, actual suicides. I read these articles. They affect me greatly, and fortunately, we have not had a suicide in our community, and I'm going to do everything in my power to keep it that way. Of course, we have had a couple of instances of suicide ideation. Suicide ideation, find this an instance in which a student has expressed the desire to do serious harm to him, her, their self. We have a very rigorous evaluation system, and we do have a student who expresses suicide ideation, and our three therapists at the teen center are trained to consider whether or not more intensive, perhaps inpatient or outpatient care at an institution outside the school district is necessary. When some of these cases of anxiety and depression, behavior challenges, family conflict, suicide ideation, express themselves. So that's, that's what I have to share. I will now open up to the board for questions. Michelle, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I'm going to stop my, my video because I'm having some technical difficulties, but can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So one thing that I wanted to mention was that the New Jersey School Boards Association has a video on their website of a superintendent in North Jersey who is speaking about how they were able to open up five days a week. And, you know, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. The superintendent went into some mail and I welcome everyone to watch that video. But he leaves out some very significant information. And it just so happens that where he is superintendent is where I used to work as a teacher. So I know the building very well and it is a regional high school, but it is a regional high school in North Jersey, which is very different than a regional high school, for example, say Freehold Regional. They have not that many students, even though it is a regional high school. So there is some information left out of that video. But I would welcome anyone who has access to that to watch it and see what he says. It sounds like there's a lot there that is very valuable. But like I said, he leaves out a lot of information and the things he leaves out are far more important than what he includes in his good advice about reopening. Also, I wanted to mention that the new variant that we're dealing with. I've read that the vaccine is not going to protect against this new variant or the South African variant or any other variant that might pop up. So that is a concern of mine in particular, whether or not me and my family do get vaccinated. But it's a concern for the community that I think we should discuss when we talk about reopening. And another thing I wanted to mention is that there are two places that I've just heard of where the teachers' union are refusing to go back to work, even though they're being, in a lot of ways, you could say forced. It's causing a lot of distress in the community. One of them is the Chicago Teachers Union. And another is right here in New Jersey in Montclair.
Michelle?
So I I do want to just mention all of those things. And how complex this this situation is for everyone involved in making this decision. And I really, I want to thank everyone who's been trying very hard to have a concerted effort in in having a productive conversation. It's very important, I think.
Michelle, thank you. I I did want to, I'd like to comment, I'd like to comment though about the
Having some some tech issues here.
We can, we can hear you. I did, I did want to comment on the vaccines though. Late today, the chief scientist at Moderna spoke out about the variants. And as that's going to change, I don't think it's our position to be telling the public anything because the latest statement as of four o'clock tonight was that the Moderna vaccine does prevent the disease in all the variants that have been tested. And they don't prevent it quite as much, they claim. But again, it's not really our position to be educating the, I I feel educating the public on that.
Mark, first of all, we're getting a lot of chatter. I don't know where that's coming from, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute everybody. Okay. Everybody's been muted, but I'm still hearing somebody.
Maybe it's you. Coming from inside the house, Scott.
No, 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 no. Anyway, it's, I just want to point something out, Mark. Michelle led to my thinking of this. There seems to still be a perception from some of our parents that our teachers are unwilling to come to work. They are not. They want to come to work. I take sole and full responsibility for making decisions to open and close the schools. I'm not getting pressure from the teachers' union, not getting pressure from individual teachers. When the time comes that we're confident that the vaccine has is prevalent among the educator community, I will likely expand my directive that teachers come in to include those who also have medical valid medical reasons why they can't be exposed to the virus, which might happen in April. But I do want to make that clear. Thanks, Mark.
Sure. Chris, I saw your hand up first and then I'm just gonna go across the other board members who want to speak.
Oh, yeah, I just wondered if Mr. Krieger would consider moving one of the public comment sessions forward.
Yeah, I do see a couple of hands and I would consider it. Does the board? Does anybody in the board object to that? Okay, let's do it. So let's go through.
Well, let me finish the board questions first.
Yes, of course, of course. No, I'm gonna go through the board, the board members. Thank you, Chris. I'm gonna go through the board members first. And I'm gonna just start, the the people I can see, starting in the upper left, Monique, then Marilyn, then Anne. And then barring that, I will read the public comment statement and I'll call on members of the public. So Monique, you're up.
Yeah, thanks. My question, Scott, which I may have missed this, but can you clarify the process by which or the timeframe that you're going to use for distributing your decision or I guess, yeah, giving notice of when when you may have to shift course, right? So that I think a big challenge has been, I don't have a problem with the criteria being used, but I do feel like this day or two notice before there's a change from the intended reopening is is even more, if not, yeah, I think even more burdensome for families to, you know, have to adjust to.
Thanks for asking that, Monique, because it gives me an opportunity to remind everybody that I will be making decisions from this point forward on a weekly basis. I I I made the decision a couple of weeks ago to wait two weeks, I, February first, to open. Because at that point, we were, we were in dire straits. I mean, we had seven day cases of sixty, seventy. And no, I didn't think it would go as high as seven, but we were up in the sixties for a couple of days. And it was obvious to me that those numbers were not going to go down within a week. So I I've decided to wait two weeks. Now, as I see what we believe is whatever the second, the third wave subsiding. I do want to continue making my decisions on a weekly basis. Normally, I would make that decision a full week in advance, so that would have been today for next week. But Monique, I'm balancing the need to give parents, guardians and faculty time to prepare to get into another zone routine with the desperate hope that the numbers are going to go down. I am desperate to get our kids back in school and our faculty in school. So I'm, I'm, so what I'm, what I have been doing is I've been consulting some teachers who are on one of my stakeholder groups, my central leadership team and principals to get a sense as to what they think would be just the nut days for people to 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 get rolling. It it generally seems like if I'm gonna make a drastic shift from going in person to remote, Wednesday is the optimal day to make a decision for the subsequent week. And and that's correct, that's what I'm, I'm looking to do something in the next day or two as we look ahead at next week. I'm, you know, every day, Mark and Anne know this. Mark beats me to it, but I refresh my browser on the county data website constantly around four o'clock, holding my breath on all those numbers. And so I I just want to do what I can to get us in. So Monique, that might not satisfy your concern, which I'm hearing is, hey, we need to give people enough time. But it's just that tricky balance that I'm trying to maintain.
Marilyn, do you, you, you want to take the floor?
Yeah, just a quick question, Scott. On the chart that you showed for mental health, where it was broken down by categories, the number of students accessing support has, if I'm reading it right, has decreased considerably?
Yeah, I'll pull it back up.
Yes. So that was my question was, what do you think they attributed that to? What can we do about that? It's not that there's less anxiety out there now than there was a few months ago. It's like students are not accessing what we do have available.
Yeah, it's a great question, Marilyn. So and and Elizabeth and I spoke about it very briefly this afternoon. I only got that data today, so we we need another day or two to think more about it, but give me one second here. I'll pull that slide up again. Her, she has two hypotheses. One, she, one obviously is that kids are are adapting, you know, I mean, not everybody, obviously. We have a core group of kids who are still struggling. But some students have adapted to this new routine, this new normal. And and perhaps also might be finding different types of supports. I'm gonna put this up in a second. The other is that along with the people in their circle of trust, their support group, students have found other ways to get the therapeutic support that they need. This is the screen that I that Marilyn's referring to. So this column shows you, whoop, this column shows you the the number of kids who worked with our therapist at the teen center only, the middle of the high school last March to June. And this is the number we have currently working with them. By the way, it doesn't mean that these are the only number, these are the only kids who are working with our our staff. It means that these are the only kids who have scheduled locked in weekly support time.
I guess there's a follow up question is, I'm assuming our staff is going back and reaching out to students who they've knew in the past had serious concerns or difficulties, depression, anxiety and so forth. Are they following up with those students that they're not currently seeing?
Yes, yes, as I asked, they are. I asked. Well, first of all, I asked Elizabeth to show me the data on pre-pandemic supports. And the numbers are not that much different in terms of the numbers of kids with regular therapeutic, therapy time set aside as they are currently. Or at least as they were from March to June. But they've been, what they've been doing is they've been working with the students who they regularly see in support groups. They've run a number of support groups, virtual support groups. And that's one way that they've been able to check in on those kids who who they were regularly seeing, who may not have come back to the teen center in the last year. I want to add that the kids who come to the perseverance pod, that's the thirty some odd students who we know were were struggling at the middle and high school with mental health issues and technical issues who come into the high school when we're able to open, at least the elementary schools. With the elementary schools being open, I've also been allowing the perseverance pod to open despite the middle high school being closed. Those kids can actually meet with some of our therapists in person at the teen center.
Okay, thank you.
Anne, you're, you're next.
You know what? My question was answered. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Rob R., would you like to take the floor?
A very quick question for you, Scott. I know you say you're looking at the case numbers weekly and checking to see where the case numbers are. But aren't there instances where the number of cases mandate that there's like a fourteen day closure of the schools before we can consider reopening?
That that has to do with in-school transmission. So in fact, there was guidance from the Department of Education recently updated that spoke mostly not to whether we should open or close if you're already in one mode, but mostly what to do when you have in-school transmission. We, we did have a couple of cases like that where we had the elementary schools open back in November. And yes, we had to keep the classes home for fourteen days. And by the way, I I am sticking with the fourteen day quarantine standard instead of ten days.
Thank you.
Okay.
Let's see, Monique and then Darcy. Monique, you have your hand up?
I'll wait because I, it's just the follow up.
So Darcy, go ahead. And I can't, I can't find it either. Sorry.
I can't for some reason figure out how to raise my virtual hand.
It's, it's under the reactions button now, I think. Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, click reactions. You'll see Ray's hand.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Oh, you changed it. Okay.
Crazy.
God help us.
Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify really quickly. And I confirmed in our, in our plan, you know, the criteria is much more stringent for the return from middle school to high school. So I think, and I don't believe we've changed or have any intention of changing that. So I think it's really important that we emphasize that each time we talk about this, so that when we talk about reopening schools, we're not talking about, I mean, it seems unlikely that next week case levels are going to be low enough to open the middle and high school. They may be low enough to open Irving and Bartle. But it seems like your decision-making structure, Scott, needs a two-tiered approach. Like to say, you're making decisions right now, week to week for Irving and Bartle, but the decision for middle and high school is still significantly delayed. And you may want to say, you know, for a month or, you know, so that when you're sending out messages, it's very clear, or even when we're talking about it in board meetings, we're not talking about the district as a whole. We've segmented it out based on, you know, what the science is for the addition, you know, the differences in transmission rates between students of a certain age, you know, under a certain age, over a certain age.
I I'm kind of hopeful, Darcy, looking at the slopes of the various curves that there is a chance in the next two to three weeks, we can have reentry in the middle and high school.
I mean, I'm not saying, it's definitely a month, but it's likely to be a week. So
It's not gonna be a week.
Right? So I mean, I think that that differentiation needs to be made and needs to be put by the parents. So when they hear us talking about a week to week thing, they realize that right now, that's not what it's looking like for the middle school, high school, because getting, I mean, we had five cases today. You know, and the what, the last two days were thirteen combined, you know, they screwed up the reporting, so it was hard to tell what was what day, but you know, just in the last three days, we're kind of close to that twenty one. So highly unlikely that for the next four days, we're gonna have one or less cases. So
That's correct.
It's not looking good for a little while, you know. I track the cases on a daily basis anyway. It's become like practically an obsession. So
The alarm bell goes off in my head around three fifty every day. You know, so any other board members who would like to ask question or make comments about the superintendent report? If not, I'm gonna read the public comment notice. And then I will call on Rebecca and then Jennifer in that order and any other public a member of the public who wishes to speak. So the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public comment, excuse me, public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policy one, six, four and one, six, seven, establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. And Rebecca, you are on. The floor is yours.
Hi, thanks for, thanks for having me. I'm not gonna turn my screen on because I'm on my phone and I'm having connection issues. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I wanted to
Can I have your name and your address, please?
Whoops. Rebecca, you still there? I do not see her.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you are.
We can.
Oh, I see.
Sorry about that. I wanted to, I I noticed that there was a lot of talk about
Rebecca, we need your, we need your name and address, please.
Okay, Rebecca Hirsch, three, three, one Felton Avenue. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. I noticed there was a bunch of talk about social emotional health for teenagers. Again, they, for some reason, elementary school kids never get thought about. I was wondering what, you know, I mean, there's, you've got five, six, seven year olds who haven't seen kids their age in a year. And I was wondering if there's anything that's going on to, you know, help those kids, you know, outdoor activities or just any, any, you know, I mean, social learning is so crucial. social learning is so crucial at that age. And they're just not getting it. And I was wondering if there's anything planned for kids, K, you know, K to three ish. I haven't heard anything about that. So I was
No, you're muted.
I can answer that, Mark. Yeah, Rebecca. I'd like to be able to expand the work we're doing with outdoor activities to the elementary schools. I told members of the board that that would be the case a few weeks after we launched the first round for middle and high school. So what you're going to see in another couple of weeks is another flyer going out and instructions about how the young kids can sign up for similar activities. I'll likely be doing the same thing I did for the middle and high school. I'll reach out to teachers who want to come out. I had five people want to come out of the middle high school. I expect them, and I have as many, if not more, at the level grade.
I think you'll have more little kids because little kids don't have any sort of social inhibition to, you know, like teenagers are like, don't want to do things, but my six year old would do anything. He would do anything to do stuff with other Irving kids or teachers to see his teacher.
Yep. And I think I'll get a lot of faculty coming out to their, I hear a lot from them because they got a taste of what it is like to be working with their kids in person. A lot of them are very anxious to come back.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't look out.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Jennifer.
Hi, everybody. Jennifer Altman and John Hume. We're at thirty one Walter Avenue. I just wanted to, and I just sent an email to Dr. Taylor and Ms. Brady. So thank you for your response. So I know a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about the number of failures that students were having and appreciate the, the, the plan to not have Fs and Ds, you know, and that's wonderful. Although I just want to say that, so we have one child that isn't in a pretty, can't get as lower as you can get since last, last March. So we're on month ten and day to day struggle. Still hasn't been in the school building since last March. And those Fs and Ds, although I appreciate that they won't be Fs and Ds, that doesn't solve the issue of the students not being able to do Zoom school. They just can't do Zoom school. So you cannot give them an F and or D, but they're not getting educated. They still have not been educated for ten months. So what I'm asking the board and Dr. Taylor and the principals to consider is some kind of solution to that ASAP, not waiting till Irving and Bartle. I know Irving and Bartle, when they open up that, Dr. Taylor, I know you mentioned the perseverance group or something like that, which I, our child was going to do, but then, you know, it closed because Irving Bartle closed. And my sense is that they're still just going in and being on Zoom, but in a cafeteria room. The point is, I would love it if the board and the principals and the district could think outside the box immediately for for these core group of students that cannot do Zoom. They cannot do Zoom. So they can't do therapy over Zoom. They can't do office hours after Zoom. We have been asked to do that, and I can't tell you the trauma in our household every single day. We can't ask our kid to go on after hours Zooms or therapy Zooms anymore because Zoom is the problem. So I'm asking you as a district to think outside the box and come up with a in person solution for this small group of students who cannot do therapy Zooms, school Zooms, or office hour Zooms, or they're losing a year of their lives educationally. I don't know what else to say, but I totally understand the dangers to going in person. But maybe there are some teachers that are willing to come in and parents that are willing to sign a waiver that says, look, if my kid gets COVID from coming in, I will not hold the district responsible. But the situation is dire and just changing Fs and Ds and taking them away does not remove the problem. The problem is these kids can't do school. They can't do school over Zoom. They can't do therapy over school and they can't do extra help over Zoom. So please, I beg you, I implore you to do something outside the box for this small core group of students. Anything else you want to add? Thank you for listening. I appreciate it. I hate to be the one giving you the dire situation. I wish I didn't have to do it, believe me, but that's where we are in my household. So I want you as a board to know where we are on month ten. Thank you so much.
And I wanted to ask you though, the perseverance group that the district put together, would that not be sufficient? And if it's not, we need to know that we are meeting, Anne and I especially have been meeting with Dr. Taylor on a very, very regular basis, like almost every day to try to solve these problems. Is that not sufficient if we opened it very soon for your child?
Well, I do appreciate that effort and it is, and we, she was about to go and then what happened is Bartle and Irving closed. And it sounds like you're not going to open that up unless Irving and Bartle are open. I was hoping that you would start it up tomorrow, regardless of whether Bartle Irving opens, because these kids can't wait for Bartle and Irving to open. The other issue, and I can't speak for truly Mark, and I appreciate the effort you guys have done, Dr. Taylor and Anne and Mark to do that. I really do. She was going to attend, but my understanding is from talking to another student we knew who was going to attend, it's just them going in and being on a Zoom on a desk. So what I'm saying is I wish that the district could provide just like a classroom for twenty kids who can't do Zoom or something. Something that isn't Zoom. Because if we continue to do that, I get it, it's safest thing, but we will, they will have lost a year of education. And unless we go to another town or pay for private schools we can't afford, we just, we're just asking you if somebody could think outside the box for those twenty or thirty or ten. So to answer your question, Mark, I appreciate the effort, but my understanding is it won't open unless Bartle and Irving open. And it will still be kids sitting, looking at a Zoom while they're doing it. But I do think it is something better than, you know, being at home.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't solve the issue that I'm talking about where kids are, you know, the solution to Zoom fatigue or is not more Zoom. So if that's possible to do an emergency kind of outside the box thing, parents like us would really appreciate it. But thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so I have one other hand up. Oliver Rosner. You have the floor.
Hi, this is Liz Rosner. My address is twenty two Harrison Avenue. So I can offer some comments on what Jen just said. My son did attend the special session. He's in middle school. So it's really no different other than you're just Zooming at school. And what he said to me was, I'm going to go and I'm going to try it. But he goes, I really don't understand how it's going to help me because the substitute teacher in that room is not on my Zoom class. She has no idea what we're talking about. I'm supposed to be able to ask her questions if I need help, but she's not actually participating in the class. And every student in the room is in a different class on their own Zoom. So it makes the availability of a teacher kind of useless for the children when they have questions because the teachers are not actively participating in the classes. So I also would just like to talk about the fact that it is very frustrating in our household. I have many neighbors and their middle school and high school children are going to private school every day. They have been going and they're going again. They did have a break during the winter, but they're back in classroom and they've been back in. And they live in this town and they're not spreading COVID in the schools they're going to. I don't understand the criteria that's being used. I don't understand what someone who can afford to pay more money to go to a private school can send their child to school. But I have, as a public school attendee, have a very different set of criteria and my child doesn't get to go to school. So that is something that I would like to hear addressed from the board because I don't understand it. And then the other issue I'm having is that now the school is actually only on Zoom. I'm purposely using my son's current school computer because I don't know if any of you can hear me or not, or if you can even hear me well. We have a lot of problems. His computer, the one he was issued, something happened in November and it stopped working. It is now January, the, almost the end of January. We still do not have a working computer back. We are continually having to switch out the computers because they get glitchy. He can't be heard. He has an IEP. He has to literally write signs and hold them up because no, the teachers can't hear him. Part of his IEP is that he's supposed to have verbal accommodations because he has a hard time writing well and he can't type well. So I really do agree with Jen Altman's comments that there has to be some sort of a solution that is different than what is being presented and offered because it's really, it's no different. The only thing that's different about going to school for what you set up is that you're sitting at a desk in school. That's the only difference. And he was happy to go. He was happy to get out of the house. He was happy to see some kids that he hadn't seen before, you know, since March. But as far as his education goes, there, nothing changed there.
Mark, can I respond?
That's it.
Of course you should. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. First of all, Liz, I'm going to get in touch with the director of technology immediately tonight follow up about the concern you have regarding the computer. I'm not aware of a problem until now. So I'm going to get personally get on that for you. Second thing, the pod, we hope on some level would help get kids out of the funk, socializing with other kids. But its primary purpose has been for the significant number of students we have in our community who live in very small dwellings, apartments in particular, with many other people sharing Wi Fi access in noisy, in a noisy environment to be able to focus and have a strong Wi Fi connection that's not being shared by four, five other people, siblings and and parents and guardians. We have a, we have a large number of students who are financially struggling. Their parents and guardians is financially struggling. So that the pot was initially set up to, to really work with those kids who, who had a loss that, that folks like myself are fortunate not to have. But I'm going to follow up promptly about the computer. So we'll get back to you on that. Liz, I'm sorry, Mark, one more question. Liz, can you just tell me which, which child we're talking about?
Oliver.
Oliver, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Scott.
Okay, do we have any other questioners or comments, please? From the public? Okay, so seeing none, I'm going to go back to number nine on our agenda, which is the board committee reports and recommendations. Oh, and before I do two things, we will discuss again Thursday on our next meeting, maybe before that, the pod, the persistence pod, and see about the timing of bringing that back. And, and it's been on our radar and this, these public comments, I think have helped and perhaps what we might be able to do. There, there are logistical problems, you know, you need, you'd need to bring in dozens of teachers to cover every class. I don't want to go into it in any details, but it would be extraordinarily difficult. We'd have to literally just open the schools. And, and so, but maybe there are some things we can do that are out of the box. So we'll discuss that. I also want to just, well, I'd like to go on though. So we have our five committee reports. We'll make our reports. We'll do another public comment period and then the board will vote on the, on the agenda, on the action items. So Michelle, could you do the curriculum and instructions, starting with a committee report and then going into the, I think you only have two items on the agenda to, to, to discuss.
Yes. So I hope everyone can hear me. Okay, I shut off my video. Okay. So we met at four o'clock on Wednesday last week. And we did a lot of discussion about some upcoming changes that they would, they would really just be in regards to grading and assessment and it's part of a larger conversation. So the main topic, topic of discussion was that type of grade and assessment oriented discussion. So I don't really have much to report as far as actions that were taken or will be taken. But I do want to explain to you that that was part of our discussion. It is, it is a hot topic. So we did discuss some of the ways that the pandemic has exposed issues in our grading and assessment. I can definitely tell you that. And let's see, the next meeting, we will discuss more of the assessment and grading. That will be January twenty fifth. And we are going to, I'm sorry, January twenty fifth is not a committee meeting. That is when the grading and assessment committee of faculty will be meeting next. So that is the next step there. The two items that we have are very, very short. First is the approval of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar. And item number two is the approval of university graduate students. They're all coming here to do university student teaching and practicum observations in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. And there is quite a long list. And, and that concludes my report.
Muted myself. Michelle, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to give the finance and facilities agenda.
Actually, Mark, Anne has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Anne.
Thanks. Just real quick, Michelle, you guys probably spoke about how we won't just be getting rid of the Fs and the Ds, right? Like there's a plan to remediate the educational, what's been missed. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that we have a plan or we're formulating a plan. It's not just a cosmetic, get rid of the Fs.
No, I mean, the reason that I'm not giving much detail is that we are still working very hard on those details. We are not being, we're not being shy about conversing of all the different, you know, problems that could arise if we change things too quickly. Any adverse effects that might occur. So we are, we are trying to be as diligent as possible with any changes that we make. And I, I don't feel like giving much detail before things are decided on is wise. So I do want to, thank you, Anne. I do want to ensure the public that we are having some very, very thoughtful discussions. And the the faculty that Dr. Taylor is working with is a hundred percent, you know, as far as the committee is concerned, going the right direction. I'm very excited about the conversations that we've had.
Thanks, Michelle.
I can't take ownership for working with the faculty directly. That's been Dr. Nikosia, Ms. Brady, Caitlin Brady and Ms. Sukow. For the public's edification, I've had the middle school principal and assistant principal on the forefront of on the forefront of collecting data and looking really hard at profiles of kids who were were concerned of falling through cracks. And now I've tasked Dr. Nikosia, our Director of Curriculum Instruction, to lead the reform of grading and assessment more broadly, since that's her expertise, but the three of them are working together. Ms. McFadden, thanks for, Michelle, thanks for being so mindful of what we can share right now, what we can't. I want to echo what Michelle said. We will be fully transparent with the community and of course, the full board. Once we've communicated with the staff, we haven't done that yet fully, you know, and, and then the parents and the guardians.
Marilyn, you had your hand up?
I guess just a follow up question, Scott, on, on those work that's being done with the students who, who had a greater number of Ds and Fs. That's more immediate than what Michelle's talking about, which is more long term. So are you able to give us a report, an idea of how, what's, what's happening with them or maybe do it next month, whatever? I'd be curious for.
Yeah. Well, so the Board Curriculum Committee was apprised of the triage. That's what Dr. Nikosia has called it, work we're gonna do. It's when you refer to thinking out of a box, it's quite thinking out of the box. We're gonna, what, what I can tell you is we are very mindful not to put the onus on the kids to be doing, you know, making up all the work that they missed. But finding a balance between getting them to show us what, what they're proficient in, in being able to do after two marking periods. While at the same time not hurting them emotionally, you know, psychologically. Hey, we're not gonna get back to them and say, look, you're gonna have to make up all this work and you gotta do it by now, by this, by this point. Rather, we're gonna be collaborating with them. We're, we're gonna be using a very individualized approach. And I'm dancing around it because again, the core group of six teachers that Dr. Nikosia has, and Ms. Sukow and Ms. Brady worked with haven't get all turnkey to their peers. So I think as a courtesy, they should know first before I bring it up to the public.
Thank you.
Anne, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to, as a comment, just tack on. You talked about finding a way to have students demonstrate, you know, their proficiency on various topics. And I mean, obviously going along with that is us helping the students get to the point of proficiency, right? It's not, it's not just, we want to see what the students can do. But it's, you know, how are we gonna fill in gaps that maybe took place or, you know, we weren't able to reach those students? So just want to make sure people knew it's not just gonna be a series of tests for your children to see.
No, no, not at all. In fact, by the way, the word test doesn't even show up in the lexicon, in our thinking, our discussions.
Yeah, I definitely want to add that, you know, as far as the committee is concerned, I think everyone would say that what we have tried to, you know, parlay to the community as far as what our priorities are in educating the children. Those are the directions that we are going in, it sounds like, with this discussion. So it's a lot more carrot than stick. It's a lot more student centered. And it is more personalized changes that, you know, are coming down the, down the road. So all good things.
Darcy and then Monique?
Yeah, just real quickly, I just wanted to point out that, you know, I think one of the most crucial things, and I love all this talk about, you know, making things more personalized for kids and really just looking for gauging their understanding rather than just giving them a bunch of random tasks that we're just asking them to do that are relatively meaningless to them. And on that topic, I just wanted to point out that, you know, states are starting to send waivers in to the, you know, the United States Department of Education for the standardized testing in the fall. The organization that I work for just started a petition to the, you know, Secretary of Education nominee to say, just cancel them for the entire country. Don't make states go through waiver processes, just do away with this. And I just want to encourage Scott to, you know, I have to admit, I was pretty distressed when I heard from my kids that, you know, one of their teachers wasn't gonna be in one of their classes because she was gonna be helping to administer the MAP. I hope we're taking another real hard look at those kinds of tests that we don't need right now. And we use those opportunities to maximize learning for our students. Any day that our children are not learning because we're giving them a standardized test, particularly in the middle of a pandemic, to me is a real loss. And there's just no space for it.
Amen. I agree, Darcy. I think the board as a whole agrees. So let's do that or not do that. Monique, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, my thoughts are really where Darcy went. So I just wanted to add too, and I kind of stepped away to use the bathroom when Michelle was giving the report. But we also spoke about, and I think, think you touched on this, Scott, that this is not about putting an undue burden on the students. But also looking kind of systemically at, you know, what was broken, what went, what went wrong systemically. So that this is not really about fixing kids. Of course, we want to make sure that they're learning. But I think, and this speaks to the point of how we assess their learning, which Darcy just kind of pointed out. So I wanted to be clear for the record that we did talk about that. We're gonna continue talking about that, just to make sure this is truly, again, helping to relieve students of the burden. Not making them feel like they have to be fixed. They are the cause of why they may have struggled during this time period and continue to struggle. So it's our job as, you know, to kind of fix the system and really mold and bend to make it work for all learners to the best of, you know, our abilities.
I would hope that all the districts struggling with the numbers of students failing are leveraging that as a way to expose what I'm sure are institutionalized problems with grading and assessment that we've had in this district for years. But Monique, that's exactly what these six teachers are doing. We chose six teachers we know are very interested in long term institutional change in the way how, how we grade and how we assess our kids. You know, I've been talking about it in my Taylor notes this Thursday. I'll be distributing Taylor notes to the entire community again. I mentioned workshop we just did with Mark Wise, who was actually very, besides being a resident of town, an expert in the area of reform, grading and assessment reform. So please, please read Taylor notes.
Okay, any other board members with comments or questions about curriculum? Okay. And I apologize, I missed the firsthand to go up there, but I didn't know there was so much interest. So thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna push through to of finance and facilities. So the first nine items, which are bill lists, treasurer's report, board secretary report, educational certification, budget transfers and reimbursement reports are the typical reports we vote on every month. And they were in our folder. Number 10 is the approval for two contractors, one for educational evaluations and one for translation services for Farsi. Number 11 is the approval of a settlement agreement. This is a multi-year settlement agreement and we have to approve it every year. This is for a special ed placement as per a, a settlement agreement with a family three or four years ago. And we've done this same approval before and, and it's, I'm gonna say pro forma. Number 12 is approval of grant amendments for additional funds. So additional original amounts versus revised amounts for fiscal 2021. And you notice they've all gone up. And, and as the amendment, as the approval says, the purpose of this amendment is to carry out unspent fiscal 2020 grant funds. Number 13 is the submission of IDA grant amendment number one. And this is also additional funds and quite a substantial amount. There's $200,000 additional IDA grant funds for a basic, basic education in the first line of that item. Number 14, I'm gonna ask the board to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a vote on tabling. This is the pass through funds for non-public school purchases. And this comes up every time we have one of these board members wonder, why are we approving funds for a non-public school? I spoke, I have spoken before, before about this with our attorneys. They're gonna do a little bit more research, both on why we have to do this. And do we have to do it or are there other bodies like the Educational Services Commission board that might vote on it? But in addition, on a case by case basis, I'd like the attorneys to look at, at what we're supposed to approve, which is are the funds being used for the correct purposes? Because no one else is gonna look at it, folks. So we should be looking at it. And so I've asked, I've asked Jonathan Bush to look at the agreement to make sure the funds are being used appropriately per the agreement. If they are being used appropriately, I will urge at the next meeting that the board passes this. I don't think there's any time and place we're gonna get another, another commission or board that's gonna be happy to, to be doing these approvals. But I think it's also not in our, our best interest to standing away, in the way of something that we're obligated by state law to approve. So once the attorney gets back to us, which will be before the next meeting, we'll put it on that agenda. And we may have to vote on this item at that agenda. So again, I'm gonna move to table this. And then items 15 is approval of a one-year preschool program plan update and submission of the plan, which we, we do from time to time. And the last item is the board finance committee met about this. And I, I want to thank Dr. Taylor and our administration for suggesting this. Because of the pandemic, some of the fundraising has been really impossible to do. And that's what typically paid for caps and gowns for all of our seniors. So the finance committee all really happily agreed to approve the board, the board paying for the caps and gowns. So there'll be this item in for about $2,500. So any questions about the finance agenda? From the board, Darcy?
Two, actually. First, on number 11, typically when we approve settlement agreements, we get a number. Like it's the OAL docket number, blah, 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 blah. Without that, how do we know, I mean, how do we match up the settlement agreement with what we have approved?
That's, that's a really good question. I didn't ask it. I should have, I think.
I've been looking at these for way too many years, Mark.
No, no, I, I know. I, I, I asked, did ask the question about it and was told that it is one of the old agreements that we, you know, that we know all about. The lawsuits that came through in Zaluk. Scott, do you have an answer though?
Well, I'm, I'm looking for the document now and, and if I can identify a number.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like we need that for our own documentation purposes that we know.
We could write it in.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like we should do that before we approve it. I mean, to just approve a random one seems odd.
Okay, I'm looking at it now. And, and what I'll also do is reach out to one of the secretaries who might be available tonight. So perhaps before we vote, I'll have that number.
Okay. And then other thing was, you know, going back to 14 and, you know, we've been approving these pass-throughs. And Monique actually brought it up a few months back and I kind of said, oh, yeah, I'll look into it. And then I didn't. And so, you know, I also had a couple of other conversations about this today, both with an attorney from the New Jersey School Boards Association and with somebody from the Education Law Center. Cause I'm just, I'm now, I have an intellectual curiosity about this as well, like particularly, I mean, when it's, we're asked to approve textbooks or we're asked to approve a security system or something like that, it's hard to see, okay, fine, whatever. It's just an agenda item. But now if we're being asked to approve an armed guard from a private security firm, this is so far outside of any realm of anything I would ever be comfortable approving, ever. And I don't, I don't see how we can be asked to approve such a thing. So for me, this one goes beyond the, can somebody else be the ones who are in charge, in charge of approving these? It goes to, can you make a board of education that has absolutely nothing to do with whatever the decision making was behind getting an armed guard for this private school? Having, what's our, what's our responsibility? What's our culpability if we approve this armed guard and this armed guard goes and hurts someone or like this?
Or doesn't do his job.
Right, I mean, to me, this is just like a hard pass, like.
Yeah, in Lenoka Harbor, in Lenoka Harbor.
Yeah, I, I just, I don't understand. I don't understand anything about this. I mean, I can approve textbooks, I can approve a security system, but I personally, I will never vote on putting an armed guard in a school. Won't do it.
Okay. I would be concerned, I'll give the floor to Anne and then Monique, but I would be concerned if we don't approve it and someone breaks, breaks, breaks into the school and harms somebody. And if there's no one who's willing to approve it and the, and the state says someone has to, I feel like our hands are tied, that someone has to approve legitimate expenses that they feel are necessary for their safety and security. So I mean, there's, can be honest, disagreement.
Rabbit hole. It's just a massive rabbit hole of what it.
I'd be very interested to see what the other attorneys put forward because, you know, as I said, Jonathan is gonna be investigating for us as well. But Anne, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I definitely think it's a good idea. We're looking into it. We should be more informed about how these pass-throughs, you know, are decided. I mean, I'm sure at some point, somebody applied for funds and somebody looked over the funds and approved them. But, but yeah, let's find out. I do want to say that I, just from my personal perspective, I don't have a problem with approving, you know, a carefully considered by somebody item of funding for a security guard for a Jewish school. I mean, it is absolutely not surprising to me that they are concerned about anti-Semitic violence. I don't know. Assuming that somebody has considered this and someone has actually done the work of like looking at the funds and looking at the company. I personally would urge board members to vote in favor of it. I mean, they probably know more about their likely exposure to violence than we do. And we all know it's a real concern. So I think we did talk about this before and the, I think we did, when we talked about this a couple of months ago, we did ascertain, I think, that this is not talking about a guard inside the school to discipline students or arrest them. This was talking about someone to protect the school from outside violent attacks. Yeah, this is my perspective. Thanks.
Um, so let's see, Monique and then Michelle, and then I think Rob, you wanted to speak, so let's go in that order. Monique, please?
Yeah, I, from what I understand, Mark, just to be clear, so you, we or Scott will be getting more counsel on what exactly our obligation is in this regard.
We'll be getting two pieces of information. One is what is our obligation? Legal obligation. And on a case by case basis, this is a great case to start with. Are they, are they, and as a board who has to approve it, somebody has to read it and know if it's, if it's spending the money, let us say according to the agreement, according to the ESCNJ Public School Security Aid Services Agreement. Have they, have they met the requirements of that act in, in, in budgeting this money? So I've asked, I've asked the attorney to look at that. He is gonna get a copy of that agreement from the district. Just a state agreement. And so if we're gonna approve something, we might as well know what we're approving. But again, I'd say if the attorney says, we are it and we have to approve it and it's legitimate, I feel like we have no recourse but to approve it. And I would couple that with what Anne says, is they may feel the real need to protect themselves and the schools from anti-Semitic violence. And with that, I'll, unless you have more, Monique, I'll turn it over to Michelle. But up to, Monique, do you?
Uh, yeah, no, I was just curious about this school technology purchase heading that this fell under.
So was I.
How that was devised.
So was I, and that's why I asked the attorney to look, to look at it.
Okay.
Sounds like it's just an error, quite honestly.
Okay.
Find out.
There are, but it is.
That was just a, it's just a title error. If you look in the body of it, it's school security. I just.
I see that, yeah.
I copy a, you know, an old one and use it as a template and I didn't change the heading. The heading should be security.
Got it, yep.
Yeah, and I mean, in my conversations with folks at the Education Law Center, and remember, Monique, I told you I'd seen something that like lays out all the different categories of aid that are going to private schools now out of public funds. out of public funds that, you know, in, to my mind, should be going to public schools, not to private schools. Um, and there are, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven categories now. Textbook aid, handicapped aid, auxiliary services aid, auxiliary, auxiliary handicap transportation aid, nursing services aid, security aid and technology, uh, technology initiative. So there are these huge buckets of money, um, which now total almost $113 million, which are leaving, um, the state coffers and going directly to private schools. And for whatever bizarre reason, even though the state is approving these, these funds for private schools, somehow we're the middle.
Right.
Yeah. That's just the big, the biggest, like, how could we even?
Yeah. It's, to my mind, it's absolutely.
It's ridiculous.
It's funny enough, when I spoke to the folks at NG SBA, the attorney from NG SBA, she was like, you know, this has never come up. I don't know. You know, like, so it's like, it's something that nobody's really even thought about before or raised as an issue as to like, why should we even have to do this? Why should this office have to spend time administrating, administering these funds? That the state legislator just has decided, if you want to give them, if you want to give private schools public money, give it to them yourself. Don't make us the middleman.
Yeah.
Every time I see a risk.
End of rant.
Michelle. Just ask off to my wound every time I see it. God, no, no, I'm just. I'm, I'm being used as a conduit to give private schools my public money.
Yeah.
Well, we, we may, we may have rants, but we may have, I'm sorry to say obligations. And, you know, and I don't know, I don't know what they can do to us, but I think that.
Those are the kind of arguments, Mark, that have been used forever about testing it, about, you know, all kinds of compliance things.
And where's the state's obligation to their, for their funding, um, responsibility to our schools? Where's their obligation being held? You know, there's.
I have no problem questioning something like this.
Okay. No, no problem. Let's find out. Michelle, you're up next.
I, uh, quickly just wanted to say that I would never vote for this either. And that I don't see how, you know, this is something that we should at all be held responsible for. I do appreciate the transparency it allows us to be able to see what the money is being spent for. But, you know, I, again, with, you know, with Darcy said and Monique said, they should just be giving it directly. I don't feel like comfortable with the responsibility of that. It's unfortunate that antisemitism necessitates something like this, but I don't want any part of it.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Rob, did you want to say something about my, you know?
Yeah. Only, only that, you know, the, it, it's about why it's coming through this particular expense. This particular pass-through is coming through, through us. Because, uh, you know, Lenoka Harbor, which is, uh, what? A, a shore, a shore town near Tom's River?
No, the school, the school is here. It's the security guard that's from there.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
Yeah, no, no, we've been this through this before. We've been this through this before.
So what school is it?
It's called, um, Rinaz Space Yakov.
Girls High School.
It's the girl's school that's right on Raritan, like.
I see. Thank you. That's all I was trying to figure out. Thank you.
While we were chatting, I looked up on the DOE's website, um, some of the rules around this. And one of the things it does say is applicable is, um, you know, the money can be used for is for security guards. But then there is a note and it says, with respect to security guards, schools are encouraged to enter into a written agreement with local law and for law enforcement agencies regarding the placement of security personnel in school buildings, the chain of command, roles and responsibilities, required qualifications and experiences, channels of communication, and required training and continual professional development. We can't just vote on something like this without knowing all of that has been.
Okay. I, I, I understand now and, and I, I, I wouldn't not ever vote for it. I wouldn't not ever. Is that, is that, it's a double negative? But so in other words, I, I guess I would pending, you know, whatever review we're going to have from the, uh, from the attorneys.
Um, right.
So.
I would ask. It's, it's different to approve a textbook than it is for us to approve an armed guard. And, um, you know, the, Anne shaking her head, no, I guess she doesn't agree, but, um, that's fine. But, you know, this to me, uh, to my, me personally, this would weigh far more heavily on me to vote for this. And then God forbid, something horrible happens.
Right. So, but let's just get the answers from the attorney.
And, and.
Certainly if our liability is not protected. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that there is a contract and it's an agreement and, you know, all that stuff. If there's not, then yeah.
I would ask, I would ask you, Scott, to talk to the, uh, to the County Commissioner of Education, please, about this situation.
Yeah.
So.
And you don't get back.
If we have to vote on it, who, who else could take our stead in voting? I mean, I'd prefer not to have to, I, it's not that I would prefer, this is ridiculous that we have to vote on this and spend our money and from our legal, uh, budget on having our lawyers review this. So, and if we wanted to do our job, well, we would have them review every time one of these comes through. Almost every month we see one of these. It's not, some months it's not for armed guards. It's for something else. I don't want to be in that position. So if you could talk to the Commissioner of Education, the County Commissioner, how do we get out of having to do this? Please?
Got it.
Thank you. Anybody else on the board have comments or questions or anything?
No, that was a perfect way to end that discussion.
Thank you.
Mark for that.
No, it's, it's really totally ridiculous. And, and I will, if we, if we must do it and if we have to vote on it each time, I am going to have the attorneys each time review what we're, what we're approving. I don't want to approve something we haven't looked at. But well, that's a waste of our time and a waste of our money. So let's get out of doing it. As I said, let's get out of doing it. And you might tell, you might tell the county superintendent how we all feel about it. Okay. And.
Mark and has her hand up.
Anne, thank you.
Just a quick question, I guess, for Linda, if you, if you know, so what happens with this money? Does this money come into us and then we just ship it right out? Or does this come from some budget item that?
We receive the money in the beginning of the school year and it just sits in our coffers until it has to be paid out.
I see.
We, we contract with the Educational Service Commission to be the go-between, uh, to process the requests. And so we will pay the money to the commission and then they will, uh, send it over to the non-public school. If the money is not spent by the end of the year, it goes back to the state.
That's a really complex process. Thank you.
Well, it just saves us the effort of going through all of the, uh, documentation on, you know, all the, the whole bureaucracy of meeting with all of the, um, non-publics and everything.
You just wish that the commission could like do all that, you know, the commission could have its little phone.
Yeah. Well, they do all that. It's just that because the money, because we're the ones getting the money, we're the ones that have to, um, approve the, uh, release of the money.
It's weird that the money has to come to us.
We're not really getting it. Why does it have to come through us?
It's flowing through us. We're holding it. We just.
No, I understand. Yeah.
It's a judiciary duty.
I think it, it must, it must make the state look really good that the public school gets that money, right? We get that money. So.
Well, we don't really get it though.
They better not use that as money that we get.
Say, I want to just.
Well, that's what I'm saying is that it's a PR situation.
I wanted to say that, that we gained some great information. Scott, I have another thing I'd like to ask you to do. Talk to your friend, Mark, at the Educational Services Commission. How about they take it all over? They can have the money. They can keep the money. They can vote on it, right?
I'm guaranteeing to you, Mark, that that piece is in the state, is in the, the legislation, that this is, that this is the funding mechanism and that this is the way that it happens. I don't think Mark can just voluntarily take it over.
Okay.
Um, it's going to need a much bigger fix, but this is the kind of situation that is perfect for the delegate assembly, right? We write some kind of a, you know, a resolution, we submit it to the delegate assembly and we bring this up as an issue. Cause even like I said, I called NJ SBA and they were like, I don't know, we'll have to do some research, you know?
Problem for us is that, that'll take years and then probably won't happen.
Of course, but you know, usually it's not something like this, right? It's not something that makes me go like, ah, no, I don't want to touch that with a ten football. You know, like this really kind of advanced the issue for me. Like I said, if it's a textbook, whatever, if it's a, even a security system, whatever, but this for me is different. It may not be, but for me it is.
I want to say something for the record, and that is the affiliation of the school as a yeshiva has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
No, of course.
That is to say, any non-public school that would be asking us to do pass-throughs would be a concern of ours that we have to spend public time and public school money and talking to our attorneys and so on, is a concern of ours. Okay.
Mark, uh, Mark, I'll have that information in time, hopefully by Thursday, when you, Anne and I check in.
Fabulous. And if you have it before, you can let us know from both the County Commissioner and from, from, uh, Mark Finkelstein. Okay. Um, so we're on, if that's the end of this pleasant conversation, could we go on to Anne and Personnel, please?
Sure. Thank you. Um, okay. So we did have our meeting on, did I just lose it? I think I just lost my meeting notes.
It is, was.
I got it. January funniest. I found it. It was on a different window. I didn't prepare minutes because really there's not much that happened that you're not going to hear about immediately at a board meeting. We discussed a number of private confidential matters about, uh, personnel that are coming up for tenure. Although tenure recommendations are Scott's decision, you know, the board hopefully will be in a position of some consensus with Scott. So the Personnel Committee does like to sort of at least get an update on what's going on. And I believe I sent out an update to the board about that particular matter, some tenure decisions. We also went over, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, wait, one, two, three, four, five, I think seven policies. Some of which will be on the next agenda in February. Others are pending, uh, review by various people. And you'll see the policies in February. They're not all that exciting. And that's all I got. Oh, sorry. Let me do the, uh, actual agenda items, which I put on a separate window. Sorry. Uh, okay. Everything is pretty, um, uh, non-controversial. There's a read-in at the end. So source for teachers, maternity leave of absence, everything is self-explanatory, I should have said. We do, uh, are sorry to learn that Mr. Martino, the orchestra teacher at the middle school, high school has resigned. But we do have a recommendation to hire a replacement, which is wonderful. Resignation, uh, number six is the new high school, middle school orchestra teacher that Scott is recommending. Scott, did you want to say anything about Sam Perez?
Oh, sure. Uh, so Sam, yeah, Sam is currently working at another district, but is teaching general education. Uh, and would like to now shift to, uh, their specialty, which is, uh, orchestra. Glowing recommendations. We received one from a direct supervisor and one from a colleague. Not much more really to say. I had a wonderful, uh, conversation with Sam. Oh, by the way, a reminder, uh, or in, in Marilyn's case, actually, uh, uh, introduction to the way we, the, uh, interview teachers at the upper grade schools. We do have students, uh, as well as parents and guardians, of course, on the committee. We had two students who have been in the orchestra program previously, uh, interview the candidates. Sam was the unanimous first pick. So we're fortunate that Sam is, uh, chosen us.
Great.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Um, number seven, a transfer, number eight, a transfer, uh, number nine, a correction. Da, 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 da. Everything is self-explanatory. Um, uh, I believe number 15, Scott, the six periods. That is because we, we had a resignation earlier of a, a special education teacher. Is that correct?
Uh, actually it's a leave.
A leave. I'm sorry. And we, you couldn't, we couldn't find a long-term maternity replacement. So these teachers are thankfully, uh, stepping up to fill those gaps. Um, but the professional development, uh, number 18, approval of staff for the virtual afternoon Title I enrichment programs. Scott, could you just give us like a couple of sentences of what, what those consist of?
Sure. Um, so this is actually what we would do in person yearly. We identify students who according to their academic background or through the INRS process could use tutoring, additional help. So we were working small groups with the kids. We'll do it virtually unless we can come back in person. This is a, as you can see, it goes through the rest of the year. I, we will be back in person well before June. So I do anticipate part of these meetings will happen in person.
Great. Thank you. Um, number 19, along the same lines, number 20, uh, this, uh, this position is a Wilson enrichment program teacher. That's after normal school hours. Is that correct, Scott? Someone had a question.
Correct. Yeah. And it, it comes as a result of, part of this is a result of a long conversation Darren and I had about the number of students who are coming up to the middle school with, uh, decoding problems. Um, and so because we currently have a part-time Wilson certified interventionist, uh, that's Christina Saki. I, I want to be able to supplement that, uh, time. I, I, I have plans to try to, uh, expand our Wilson services, our decoding support come fall, pending the Finance Committee's approval of the preliminary budget.
Great. Thank you.
And Stocky, by the way, I'm sorry. I said Saki. I mispronounced her name. Christina Stocky.
Uh, 21, um, in case anybody's wondering, paraprofessional lunch aids are only paid sadly for them if we have lunch and we're not having lunch right now. But if we go back to having lunch, they'll be paid. Number 22 is the outdoor activity facilitators that we talked about. This is paid from our CARES grant money. It's not from our regular budget. And Scott, this is on not just one day a week, but it's spread out somewhat so that students can potentially attend two or three?
Right. Uh, so in the case of the middle and the high school, the, I said five, let me get my numbers straight. I think it's four individuals, teachers and including Mr. Harrison, who's not a teacher or a research specialist. Spread the kids out into separate activities throughout the week.
I was a little concerned because on one day there were like six activities being offered at the same time. And even with 27 students, you know, there really wasn't, there weren't enough students to sort of round out all the activities. So I'm hoping that perhaps you can get some feedback from the teachers about that and consider maybe separating some of the activities. I, you know, in my kid's case, you know, people wanted to play football and soccer and there weren't enough for both. So I'd be great to see our teachers have time to, you know, do both activities.
Well, I'm certainly not concerned about the funding source because the CARES grant is purposed for this kind of thing.
Yeah, it's fantastic. It's really great. I hope that people will consider their, will consider encouraging their kids to go out and do this. It looked like a fun time even for someone like me who's not a sports person. Okay. Overtime translator, scheduled B appointments. And now I have a read-in number, number 26. I'm just going to go ahead and read it. The approval, the title is approval of paraprofessional at Irving Primary School. I moved at the Board of Education, accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the appointment of Amanda Marrero, paraprofessional at Irving Primary School, Step One, $14.99 per hour, seven hours per day with a stipend of $1,000 for having a BA. And that's pending criminal history background check and it would be effective January 26, 2021. Uh, are there any questions about that or about any of the stuff on the personnel agenda?
I think Chris had one. Chris?
Uh, yeah. So, so two questions. One, one is just the, um, you, you talked about expanding the program that's going on now to the lower grades. Is that going to be a similar budget item? And is there enough money? Okay.
Yes, it'll be CARES funded. This expenditures is, um, is not very great. Uh, I think, what, what's the cost? Forty-eight dollars? Yeah, it's. Yeah, forty-eight dollars per hour. I mean, it's not a great expenditure. Linda can speak more to what we have remaining in our CARES grant. But that last check, it was a significant amount of money.
Yeah, that's great that you're, that we're able to expand that potentially. Um, about, about the stipend for the paraprofessionals, I, I just, you know, what, what is the stipend for? I just didn't follow the.
Do you want to clarify that?
Was that, I can. Was that number, uh, which number are you on?
The one that Anne, it was for a BA.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. I didn't, perhaps. Yeah. Uh, she has a BA. So there was an agreement in the collective bargain. The collective bargaining agreement includes a provision that provides an extra $1,000.
Per year, is that?
Yeah, I think it's per year, right? Yeah. 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 In addition to the princely sum of $14.99 an hour.
Okay. I, I wanted to just have a shout out to, to Anne, to my colleague Anne, who had really personally put a lot, a lot of energy into the outdoor activity program. And, and no, really, and, and worked with Scott and, and our teachers to make it happen. And, and I think, um, I, I certainly approve, you know, uh, uh, was really happy the time and energy you put in, in on that. And I think the community should be as well.
Thanks, Mark. I'm just so delighted that it worked out and I'm so grateful to our teachers for coming out. I mean, you know, that's a lot for them to do. I'm just delighted. And, you know, for my kid. And, you know, for my kid, and I'm sure some of the other kids who came out, it was just, it was a ray of sunlight. So thank you, Scott, wherever you are. There you are.
Any other board comments? Otherwise, we'll move on to policy and then equity and excellence. So Darcy, could you present the, the policy?
I can. I've been a busy girl for the last week or so, policy-wise. We had a policy meeting on last Wednesday, and I also intended, I think I attended all of the committee meetings. We hadn't had a finance one, but we had done, we had done our policies at our last meeting. So I really appreciate everyone taking the time out of their committee meetings to review policy and to allow me to hop in and take a look at those with you. So we have on the agenda tonight, we have a couple of, actually a few policies that went through the Finance Committee, a couple of policies that went through the Curriculum Committee, and that as Anne mentioned, and I'm sure Monique will mention as well when she gives her report, for next month's meeting, we should be looking for, looking at some personnel and equity and excellence policies as well. So once we're done with this batch, that is the end of us playing catch-up on Strauss Esme alerts, which is fantastic. And then we can cross our fingers. We don't get another one for a while. And my next goal is to start looking at policies that we need to look at annually. And there is, you know, a moderate list of those that we can, you know, if everyone's willing, kind of do the same way. I'll divvy them up according to our committees, and we'll look at those, and then they'll come back to the Policy Committee, and then we'll get them on an agenda. So, so did anyone have any questions about the, we have what, for first reading, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven policies. So if anybody has any concerns or questions about those, now would be your time. Although these have, at this point, been reviewed by the committees and most of them by person, by the Policy Committee as well. So, yes, Michelle?
I just wanted to remind you that curriculum is also going to be coming up next time.
Right.
Because.
I think are some of yours. We just, yeah, the first two.
Oh, okay. So that doesn't include the others that we looked at?
To move forward.
Yeah. So that's for next time. I just wanted to, you know, remind everyone to look out for those next time.
Yeah. So for some reason, only two made it onto this one, but we'll make sure that the rest of them, I'll quadruple check all of our lists that went out to the different committees and make sure that we move all of them forward.
Darcy, do me a favor and email me those, those policies.
I know that you sent me that today, and I just had way too busy of a day today.
Take a time.
Things going on. So, and I will be unavailable tomorrow as well. So once I'm kind of back with it, I will, I will definitely do that, definitely before the next meeting, well before the next meeting.
I forgot I asked you. I'm sorry.
No, that's all good. Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you. So Monique, tell us about equity and excellence, please.
Yes, I could follow right up on where Darcy left off. Our, really our, both the bulk of our discussion was around the three policies we looked at. The first two, as you can see, are on the agenda, the eligibility of resident, non-resident students, and use of electronic communication recording devices. You know, each of those policies are pretty straightforward. We didn't find any significant issues. With regards to eligibility of resident, non-resident students, we did, um, sort of take a look at the, a clause in there that's spoke to parents or any person who allows a, a child to reside in their home fraudently, or a parent who fraudently sends their child to our school when they don't reside in Highland Park by using someone else's address, for instance, could possibly, or does commit a disorderly person's offense. And so, you know, that's the law. That's obviously not our decision to make as to what the system says, what kind of fines or criminal entanglements occur in that case. But we did, I think, agree that we don't want to really get involved in that. You know, we just want to, we, when we find that there are, if there's a student that does not, is not eligible to attend our school, has not gone through the process of, you know, being a non-resident and still attending school, and they, and they do get removed, that's enough. Like, we're washing our hands and we're done with it. We really don't want to get caught up with an additional legal system entanglement for parents or caregivers, residents who get caught up in that. So I think that was the one point that we really discussed a bit and agree that that, that was something we didn't want to really get caught up with. And then on the electronic communication recording devices, we just talked about, ensuring the language in there references the fact that authorized use or approval of electronic devices, whether it's for recording or communication, is certainly allowed and is excluded from this, some of the policy restrictions. I'm particularly thinking about students have IP-related needs in that regard. We talked, third policy we talked about needed a little bit more work, and that's the Student Discipline Code of Conduct policy, which is not on the agenda for first reading. I think we're looking for the February 8th meeting, if I'm not mistaken, to, to go ahead and take that up. And I think what we're going to be doing in the meantime is just looking at updating the, the language to reflect our current code of conduct, restorative practices approach, and just ensuring that, you know, the, this, this policy does reflect the, the really radical changes that were made in many ways to the discipline code here. So the other part to that or piece of that is also, we talked about adding language that would kind of codify the process that we've already been instituted in our system whereby Scott presents a discipline report to the board monthly. And of course, that's, that's a closed-door session item. But we want to kind of codify, codify that in the discipline codes, that this is really something that we, that we expect to happen monthly and is a part of our policy of how we implement our discipline code. Just having the board really being updated on a monthly basis as to what's happening in all schools with regards to discipline, discipline reports. So I know Scott is going to be consulting with Jonathan Bush to just check on any legal implications regarding that, adding that language to the policy. So we'll take care of all that and hopefully have that on the agenda for the next, for February, um, first read. If that's, if that's what I think our date is that we designated, correct, Darcy or Scott?
For the next meeting?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, I'll tell you right now, that four.
Okay. And eight was in my mind, February 4th, start off that.
It's February. The board meeting.
Okay. Um, last item, we talked about unrelated to policy, was really just sort of the state of remote learning on our special education students. This is a topic that we will be continuing our next meeting, but we just discussed the importance of our legal obligation to continue to meet the students, the needs, the IP required needs of students in our schools. And I think to some point, some comments earlier about thinking out of the box, this is the exact discussion we had about finding creative ways to ensure that students are receiving the services that they're legally required to, to, to receive and that they need. So to that end, Scott has agreed to, you know, really implement an audit of, you know, IP system-wide, to look at areas where there may be issues that need to be resolved and to really take that case management approach to, to the remote learning realm and really looking at where the problems and issues are, where we're kind of, where the big gaps are and where services are not being implemented to the extent that they should be. As per the IP, Scott agreed to pursue this course of action with Susie Boudin, and we will continue discussing, following up on that and also discussing, just generally speaking, the state of remote education for students who receive special education services. And that is it.
Monique, thank you. Any, anybody have comments or questions from the board?
And one more thing, you know, I did want to just, and I didn't include in the notes, but Scott, can I just, can you just confirm that Susie Boudin would be joining us, will be joining us for our next Equity Excellence meeting?
Yep.
So we will get a debrief on the findings of the audit and again, further discuss other areas of concern that we want to address in terms of remote learning and. Thank you.
Thank you, Monique. If, if there's no other questions, I'm going to open it to public comment again. And so, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation as reserved this time for your comments. Board policies, 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. So it is open to the public. And if you have questions, comments, et cetera, please raise your hand or turn on, turn, turn on your video and wave, and I'll, I'll recognize you to speak. Thank you. Okay, so seeing no public comment, I'm going to move on for Michelle to move her curriculum and instruction items.
Yes, I would like to move items one and two under curriculum and instruction.
We have a second.
Second.
So Linda, could you call the R L, please?
Mr. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, so before I move the finance items, Scott, did you have the approval number? Not yet. So why don't we, why don't we table that unless, unless there's some hardship here for us as a board? Let's, let's move, table that as well for our next meeting, which will be on February 8th. So I'm going to move items one through 10, 12, 13, 15, and 16, and table numbers 11 and 14. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Rob.
Alinda?
Discussion?
Oh, excuse me, discussion?
I, I just want to thank you very wholeheartedly for tabling number 14. I had some serious questions about it, and I'm glad that it was tabled, so it could be researched further.
Rob, thank you. Thank you. And I want to thank Darcy to, for bringing it, her, her strong feelings to my attention. I think that got the ball rolling early, earlier on, and it's something we need to do. We need to investigate all of these.
You can always count on me for strong feelings.
Yeah, we know. So, um, okay, so I think we're ready for a vote? Yes? Okay, Linda?
Mr. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Um, Anne, could you move the personnel items?
Sure. I'd like to move personnel, number one through 26, and reminding the board that number 26 is the one that I perhaps unclearly read into the record. Is there a second?
Second.
A marketing call for discussion. I'm sorry. Thank you, Rob.
Any discussion? Well, we discussed it already once, but I'll call for another discussion. Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
And Darcy, policy?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to move items one and two.
I'll second that. Any comments or discussion, folks?
A really quick question on 2622. Does this essentially eliminate any option for students to opt out of the standardized testing?
I don't see how it would. Nothing, I mean, nothing, nothing can eliminate a parent's right to opt their student out of testing. I mean, inherently, it's, it's not a state sanctioned activity to opt out of a mandatory test. So no policy could stop a parent from opting their student out.
Okay. The, the way I read it was that, you know, all students are required to take the test, and if they didn't take it on the first day, that they would be, the next time they're back in school, that's when they would have to take the test.
Right. And that's what the district is required to do, but what a parent does is something completely different. Right? And I mean, what we did here, when this same policy was in existence, was put a much different system in place for the students of parents who chose to stop their students out.
Thank you.
Okay, so Linda, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Morasty?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner? You're muted.
You're muted, Rob.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. McFadden, Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's see. So we have no voting items for equity and excellence, but next time we will under policy. So, um, so board liaison reports, I guess I just wanted to go around and anyone with a report, can you raise your hand? Rob, why don't you, Magaziner, please?
Right. Just quickly, the HPEF Ed Foundation did meet a couple of weeks ago on the 12th, mainly aimed at improving strategies and effort to grow outreach. The HPEF continues to support our programs through a large number this year of mini grants, which have been very effective with, with our, our district. And then I'll, I'll repeat one thing that I've said before, and that is that the HPEF has asked me to publicize because it's important to them that they increase their membership. They're, they're always looking for new people, whether they're actually members of the foundation itself or are interested in, in working on some of their projects. So you can contact Lisa Berlin if you are interested in joining. That's it.
Rob, thank you. That's great. And they're a great organization. They've helped the school, schools years. Really great. Anyone else who's gone to any meetings? Okay, I guess not.
No, Anne?
Oh, Anne, I'm sorry. Oh, Anne, Michelle, I'm sorry. I'm missing, I'm missing, I keep missing those hands up in the corner of your, the blue screen. Go ahead, Anne.
Okay, I don't know if Michelle is first. I.
No, go ahead.
Um, this is not, I didn't attend any meetings, but I wanted to update the board. Number, letter P, Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs. I spoke with Gail. That has now been made a subcommittee of the Human Relations Commission. So we don't need a separate item for that. And of course, equity, as I think Monique already told us, number, letter Q, Equity Commission, that is now the Mayor's Advisory Council on Equity. Do we have any board members that are on that Advisory Council?
No.
No.
My knowledge.
This is not the, usually the kind of thing that we have a liaison to, but I'll reach out to the mayor again and see if they're interested in that or if that would be appropriate.
Well, I think given that the, the, the area of focus is essentially the same, it's just a restructuring, and it, and it's not under, it's not like it's under another committee that we do have a liaison for. So I do think it makes sense to maintain a liaison possible.
I'll reach out again. I didn't get that answer yet. Thank you.
Um, question, Anne, what did you say that the Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs is now a subcommittee of?
Our Human Relations Commission, so J, letter J is in John.
So that means we could drop number P and who else? So, so Linda or Scott, when we're making up the agendas, we could drop number P? Thank you.
I'll do it now, Linda.
Okay.
And I guess.
Well, for the next meeting.
Next meeting.
For the next meeting, not this one.
For the next meeting.
Okay. And I guess for letter Q, Equity Commission, I guess we should delete that with the caveat that, or maybe we could leave it in place for now, with the caveat that I'm going to contact Gail and see how we can liaise with the council. So I don't want to
Shall we change the name of it?
At least change the name, I was thinking, right?
Change the name.
Yeah, so far they haven't invited us to liaise with them, so I'm a little hesitant to put down who's our liaison to the equity, you know, advisory council. Let me, let me check in with Gail and see. I mean, I'm going to push for us to do it because I think that's the right thing.
But in the meantime, can we leave it and just change the name? Is that what we're thinking? Want to just remove it completely?
Let's remove it for now, but I'm writing it down in my calendar, check with Gail, so it won't get forgotten. I don't want to give the impression that we decided we're going to have a liaison without, you know, maybe consulting her.
All right, so let's remove it for, for the next meeting, and then we can put it back as we need to. And thank, thank for talking to the mayor about this also. Michelle, did you have your hand up as well?
Yes, I don't have a report from the Middlesex County Board, but there is a meeting that I'm registered to attend on February 3rd. So I just wanted to let all of my fellow board members know, and if they had anything for me to bring, I would be glad to bring it.
You know what the topic of the meeting is? Is it anything interesting, or is it just sort of a general?
It's a general meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for filling us in, and maybe you'll have something interesting to talk about at the next board meeting. You know, about this.
I hope so.
Yay. Anyone else? Okay, um, number 13 is president's report. I have no report. Does anyone have old business? Okay, anyone have new business?
Mark, do you want to bring up the budget calendar, or Dr. Taylor, do you want to?
Oh, yes, indeed. I have to, I have to find it on my desk, on my machine. Hold on one second.
Okay. Some of these days are
I was going to mention both the budget and the we have the budget coming up, and for those of you on the negotiations committee, we have already been approached by the HP Administrators Association. So negotiations will begin in February, and the HPEA, the Education Association, which represents the large majority of, of our staff, our educators, they have not approached us yet, but I'm sure they will shortly. So it is going to be pandemic notwithstanding, it's going to be the usual, very, very, very busy late winter and spring. Let me find that on my, in my calendar here. Okay, let's see. Let's see, let's see, whoops. Oh, plus two. Budget calendar. Okay, I'll just present the overview of the budget calendar. Scott and Linda are meeting right now, January and February, with administrators. And in February and March, the committee, the budget committee, the finance committee will be meeting with the administrators, with Scott and the administrators to go over the budget. The governor's budget address is February 23rd. The state aid numbers, this seems really early, will be, will be released on February 25th. And we have to have a adoption of a tentative budget on March 15th or March 22nd for submission to the county, because they're due by March 22nd. And then March through May, we'll be making presentations. May 3rd, we'll have a public hearing. And May 5th, the user-friendly budget will be posted to the district website. So we have a busy, busy calendar to be working on this budget. And again, it's going to coincide with trying to get the kids back to school in the era of the COVID pandemic. And as well, doing the negotiations with both of our unions, associations, which, which represent the, the vast majority of our educators in the district. It's going to be busy. And I'll keep everyone apprised in both the Finance Committee and the Negotiations Committee.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome. Trouble catching my breath, thinking about what this spring is going to be like. It's like years ago, when I just had rejoined the board, doing the finance and the budget, the finance budget and the negotiations at the same time.
Right.
Oh, my God.
Well, I'm just thinking about not going in and out of New York every day and fitting this in. So it's a little, I mean, that, that's one good thing, one good thing. Yeah, maybe.
Well, and, and good for me being long retired. It's much easier.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Still, this is, it's like, it's like a very busy full-time job. So I have no old business. I guess for new business, that's the, that's the budget calendar. Anyone else have any older new business on the board? Okay, and I'm going to open again for public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. Reserve this time for your comments. Board policies 164 and 167 establish and regulate the right of the public to participate in public meetings. And I'm just going to say, I'll have that memorized in two or three more meetings as president. And I see that Mrs. Rosner has her hand up. Oh, there we are. So the floor is yours, please.
Hi, it's actually Rob Rosner. I was at a owning board meeting earlier. I understand you guys maybe talked about the letter I sent. I just wanted to have the opportunity to say thank you to all of you. I really do applaud all the hard work you guys do, do. It's very clear, you work very hard as board members, as Scott, you too. I see all the work you're doing. I wanted to just say, I didn't have a chance to put it really in writing, but I always wanted to tell you, I do thank you. I applaud the work you do. We disagree on the metric perhaps that we should use. And as, you know, people, reasonable people can disagree, I just wanted to put it on record, though, that, you know, again, thank you. And I didn't have a chance to, like, go back and hear what you said about the letter. I'll do that offline. I know it's really late. But I didn't want to close the night without at least saying that. So thank you, and we disagree, but perhaps we'll have a conversation going forward.
Rob, thanks so much for those thoughts. I, I did want to say, we didn't specifically address the, the letter you wrote, although you should, you should listen to, of course, offline to Dr. Taylor's presentation of the parameters we use and the CDC recommendations and all of that. He did make a rather long presentation on that, and it was, to a great extent, a recognition that everyone doesn't agree. And again, though, I, I do want to thank you. That's very thoughtful, and we will, we will be, we are trying as hard as we can to get these schools open. And it really is everyone's fervent hope that this can happen. So again, thank you. Any comment? Okay, well, with that said, I think we're ready for adjournment, so I move to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? It's over. Thank you all.
Good night.
Bye. Thanks, Mark, thanks, Scott. See y'all.